Good evening.
What's your question? I think everybody is aware that we are a sub-receiving grant to government recovery for a grant for our third street pump station. That's a $3 million, $3,150,000 grant. In order to obtain that grant, we do have to adopt certain procedures on their procurement rules. So the resolution or the request you have for resolution is to accepting that procurement rules so we can enter into that sub-receiving agreement and collect funding through the grants for CDVG VR funds.
Questions? Okay. Can you get somebody to move it for him, please? Move by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
And if we don't stop, hey listen, we'll talk more.
We go home and meet you dinner. Have a good night.
Because when you want money, that would talk more.
Once they have some of the money, just bring it to us.
Any other business to come before finance?
To adjourn.
Second.
Okay, call to order, Health and Recreation. The end of the report, Mr. Daley.
Good evening, everybody. I'm not coming to you for money. I'm sorry about the money that we made. So that's always a good news. The golf course is quite well this year. We exceeded last year's revenues. Before we get into that, we closed November 20th, which ended up being a good thing because on November 21st, it snowed. So it was perfect timing. You should have gotten some in your mailbox with a revenue comparison report for last year. There's a couple of lines that are a little skewed. If you look into the term at Greenfield on page two, it says 178 as opposed to 79. It should be 78, not 170. So you see that number a little high. But on the bottom, notice that the revenues were a little bit higher this year than they were last year. So we were up 6%. So that was good news. And two years ago, or excuse me, before the season started last year, I had approached you about doing a fall special that I thought would enhance the golf course revenues in the month of October or November. It's generally pretty slow at that time, and a lot of golf courses do that. So when we first started, before we did it, in 2014, we made $80,224 for the month of October or November. And this year, we made $111,785. So it's a significant increase there. So it's nice to see that those ideas going forward actually paid off.
Very good.
Just thought you might want to know that.
Good.
Makes money.
Yes.
Any questions? This question? Ms. Prado.
Just wondering what you're working out for next year? Will we need to make a push out in the distance where we are in the big project?
Yeah. We're going to redid that project next summer. Our superintendent, Mike Sesney, is actually going to be doing some of the work this winter to save us a few dollars, which is kind of a blessing in disguise that has that whole thing kind of unfold the way it did. Because now Mike is able to take it by the reins and he'll be able to save us some money going forward.
Can you just fill the council in? Just remind them what project you're talking about?
For years, the golf courses had some drainage issues, most notably Number Eight. John has played there for a number of years, you know. Number Eight was kind of a quagmire. And we've actually created some funds. Now we did a bid bond, which we're paying it off now. And so next year, hopefully that eight hole is going to be fixed. There's a few other adjacent holes near it. We're rebuilding some tee boxes on three holes and redoing some of the carp pads to enhance the look of the golf course. We did true removal the last two years, and that paid off immediate dividends. We saw some great turf quality, airflow into the golf course, and it just made the course look better. So good things going forward. But I know, John, you had mentioned that you want to get together with Ed and set up a meeting on how we can get the casino on board.
We really talked to Bill Muzak. I think we got the plans.
Yes. Yeah. We'll get that in the works this week.
Yes.
Early this week. I'll let you and Bill know about it.
Questions? Oh, sorry.
No, she'll at least ask my question. The president asked my question. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Daley.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
The second agenda is the discussion regarding the Police Athletic League. And I have, we have Chief Clifford here, Sergeant Lanier, and Officer?
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant, that's your name.
Just got promoted.
Yeah.
Got promoted.
I called him officer, he is lieutenant. So as we all know, we, PAL is something that we've had in the past, and currently we don't have a Police Athletic League. And so the discussion has come up with the police force that it would be something to have, you know, to good for our youth and Schenectady. So I've invited them tonight to just talk about what their ideas are.
Having, you know, recently I took over the youth aid bureau at the police department. You know, I hear a lot from the kids, you know, as a, there's not much to do. So, you know, I kind of took over the Police Athletic League and knowing Ryan was dealing with it in the past and just saying, you know, how can we get this started? So essentially, we're here to, to honor your support to get the league going again. And I know they ran into some hurdles in the past that Ryan can speak to. We're just, you know, trying to think of ideas around how we can get it, you know, and successful for the community and youth this way.
Yeah, so I think it was 2012 or 13, we tried to branch out, do a smaller version of the league. We couldn't necessarily go under the PAL name, but it was the Police Athletic Activities League that we tried doing. But we ran into some issues when we tried to go off on our own. Some of the main things were along the lines of, a lot of it was with insurance and the cost of insuring ourselves. So we didn't, you know, a lot of us were new at this type of stuff. So we didn't realize, I think, the extent of the amount of insurance that you need. So there's what we call general liability insurance and directors and officers insurance that would protect your board members, that would protect all your participants and things like that. So that, we were grant-driven, I believe, if I remember correctly, back in 2012. We received a grant that gave us enough to get started. Problem, the problem is, or one of the problems that we ran into is a lot of times for fundraising for purposes, to keep the league going, you have to have your 501(c)(3) certification as well, or your nonprofit status. That costs money as well. So we were kind of in a catch, whereas, you know, we needed to have our 501(c)(3) status to get going, but we needed to generate money to keep ourselves, or at least get ourselves up and running. So we had, you know, plenty of people that were supporting us from inside the department. It's just, I think, we would definitely benefit from having people that are a little bit, have a bit more knowledge on this kind of stuff. And if we could go back underneath this city, I guess the city's umbrella, we would probably have a little bit less to worry about, especially when it comes to general liability and some of your insurances that go along with it.
Have you considered what the cost would be overall to have a PAL program?
Well, so I can go back to the numbers that we had back in 2012. So we, if I remember correctly, we were somewhere around $2,700 to $3,000 was what would cover our general liability and our directors and officers insurance. So there was that cost. And then there'd just be the cost of putting out programs and things like that. We had a little bit left over. We, you know, we put money towards getting ourselves insured. And we had a little bit left over. So we still kind of cut it off and stopped when we realized that we probably weren't going to get, I don't think the grant came through the next year. So there was no grant to keep us going. So we probably have about $1,000 to cover, or we can put towards it to get going again, to get ourselves started. And we had to find an insurance company, a private insurer out on the outside that we worked with that we was cool insurance. So we worked with them. I don't know if they're still affiliated with the city, but back at the time, they were, so.
And we do have some private partners that are interested in donating, but it's a matter of having stats that they can benefit by a write-off. So, you know, we have some fundraising ideas, but initially, it's, the first hurdle is coming under the city's umbrella so that we get into those fundraising activities to support the program, so.
Well, one of the questions that has been raised is the officers' compensation in order to do this and what the, what you think that would look like.
Well, it's a volunteer basis with no, that's how we foresee it.
We've been running some programs. So we, when we realized we weren't able to insure ourselves, we started with the Community and Police Basketball League, which has been going on for a few years now. And they have, if I remember correctly, were insured through the YMCA or got their coverage through the YMCA. So it was a great opportunity for us because they were just asking for us to volunteer. And so our guys really volunteered on their own time and came out to do that. So we do have a lot of positive support from our guys. The other thing that we did is, I'm a big basketball fan, so you can get me to do anything with basketball, but not everybody's a big basketball fan. So when we originally were trying to restructure PAL or structure the original PAL, or Police Athletic Activities League, we put out kind of a letter of interest to each one of the guys in the department and girls in the department. And we wanted to see what kind of things they would be interested in. Whether it's not basketball, maybe it's going on a hike, maybe it's doing things like that. You know, what kind of things would you be interested in? And we got a lot of different, I still have it to this day, different types of, you know, activities and things that guys and girls would be interested in doing with some of the kids. Hopefully that answered your question.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. So you're not saying, I'm duty officers volunteering to be part of the league. You're saying, often the officers volunteering their time to be part of the league?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Obviously, we're really in the infancy of this because we would be reestablishing ourselves back under the actual national PAL, which I think is what we originally were back in the late 90s and early 2000s. So we would want to reestablish ourselves under PAL. And there are probably a lot of guidelines that they have along the way. But it would be nice to have, and that's what we ran into, is that we're trying, we're not accountants, we're police officers, so we don't have law degrees and we're not accountants. So we're trying to get ourselves through a lot of paperwork, and we just weren't equipped to deal with, I think, even some of the basic stuff like applying for 501(c)(3) status and things like that. It's just, you need a lot of assistance along the way. Yeah.
Other question? Mr. Rivera?
So basically, what are you looking for us at the city level to drive us forward?
Oh, for the support, obviously, but the, bringing up that insurance charter.
You talk about insurance. Is that something you're looking for the city to carry for this league?
Yes.
And to help with the documentation?
Yes.
In terms of the 501(c)(3).
Yes, so you're just looking to reestablish the league the way it was before, and then it's just going to be an umbrella. The city's existing insurance would most likely not increase anything that we already have. And you want to establish a 501(c)(3) utilizing our internal legal department?
Yeah, and I guess that was one of the questions that we were going to actually have along the way, that if we, if we were, you know, to go back underneath the city, would we reestablish, would we reestablish 501(c)(3) as our own organization, or would we have that status under the city?
Right, right. We need to do that. If you decide to go independently, that's when you would want to establish your 501(c)(3).
Understood.
Other questions?
Well, I for one think that having PAL, you know, would be a wonderful thing again to have in the city, given the climate of what it is with law enforcement and communities at this height, for one thing. And additionally, one of the things that we've talked about numerous times is that there are a lot of, we don't get a lot of diversity in our police department. But we start at a younger age where young people are exposed to this because they may not be exposed to it through family line and other ways, but this is an opportunity for them to be exposed to it, to have positive interactions with police officers, which I think is hugely important. And as the lieutenant said, we already were, they were already doing the community and police basketball, which was extremely successful. And this would just be an opportunity to kind of expand that kind of interaction between police and our youth, and ultimately, the family. So I thank you for coming, and we'll see what we can talk about moving forward. All right, we'll discuss with the man. Thank you. Is there anything else to come before Health and Recreation?
Second.
All those in favor? We're adjourned.
Call to order, administrative efficiency. The only item on the agenda is the final review of the smoke-free cars for children less than the age of 16. Mr. Crow, yeah, Mr. Crow. Mr. Falto put together the legislation for that, and it's in your packet. Is there any questions? Are there any questions? Not is. Don't see any, so. Miss Porterfield?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else for administrative efficiency?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.
I'm so sorry. You're going to have to call back to order again because I do have a question. I'm sorry. I was like, trying to make sure I was reading this right, so.
Rewind the tape.
Yeah. Call back to order, administrative efficiency.
Thanks. So I thought when we originally spoke, the first violation was going to be a warning. Who reads the first violation as a fine?
Yeah. So how Mr. Falto stated is that would just be too difficult to do a warning. So I think instead, maybe we have like a six-month, like, period where if you get stopped, you're not getting, you won't get a ticket, just be told you can't do this anymore. And then go from there.
Okay, so from the time this is passed, six months out, it'll be?
That's how I picture it, yeah. It gives people plenty warning, that gets them into the notion of you can't smoke in a car with kids, and that, once that six-month period ends, in goes the law.
It's just hard for people traveling into our community that, you know what I mean? Yeah, I mean, we have people traveling to our community all the time that.
Well, we travel places too, and there's laws that we don't know about, so.
Yeah.
Is there any, are there any steps being taken to address this in terms of public address?
Yeah, we definitely need to do.
Get this out to the public.
We definitely need to do an education campaign. Certainly, the media would be a big piece of that, but neighborhood associations we would reach out to, as well as maybe some, see if we can work on maybe some signage or something to talk about.
I think we might need some signage, especially when you're entering the city and a specific location, also get the police department more engaged in terms of, get this out to the public.
Yep. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
You want to move it again?
Yeah.
All those in favor? We are adjourned yet again.
You're moving down the government apps. Are you going to do that?
Yeah, we probably have some stuff in the development planning that's not executive session, so we're going to have to go in and down anyway.
So move that.
Although, no, let me do the government apps because then, once we go through the first couple of agenda items, we'll go into executive session.
The Miracle on Craig Street people thought they were way down in the agenda and they're coming.
Okay. Government operations, I'm going to call government operations to order, and first item is the security breach and notification policy.
Is this sent out or was not sent out?
Was not sent out.
It's my understanding the draft is available. I just don't know. I know that Christine and Carl worked on it. She told them. I asked Christine if they ever missed each other, so I thought maybe she had sent it down because it said she attached. Maybe I missed it, but what I will do is, I'll follow up with her first thing in the morning, and if it's available, if we do, I'll send it around. But I'm assuming we have to bring it back anyway for comments.
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, it's just kind of a cookie cutter thing that we need to have in place for our security breaches. So I, I mean, if everybody else is comfortable, we can pass it out of committee and then review it before Monday night. I don't think it's anything that's too adept.
It's not going to be anything. It's basically like for our insurance policy, making sure that we can be, we have to have something in place. But, and I know that it exists, I just haven't seen it myself, so.
Are the two of you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I mean, it's a compliance thing, so yes, I agree. I completely agree with that.
Okay, move by Mr. Palmanis and by Ms. Zulinski. And next, we have a letter of support for Miracle on Craig. I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
Two more.
Just moving right along. A letter of support for Miracle on Craig Street is included in your packet. Do everybody already have a chance to read it? Do you have any comments? Ms. Potter?
So isn't this thing held up with federal lanes on the property and so on and so forth? And are they looking to do? What are they looking to do? Are they looking to do loans or?
I'm not sure. They're coming, so I don't know the answer to that, those questions.
Right. That's my main question.
That was one of my final questions to, what are we supporting? Are we supporting fundraising? Are we supporting demolition of this building? Are we supporting getting a new building and move forward?
Right.
Can we get someone to?
Well, I guess today, because I know they're coming over, if you want to recess this and let them come after the other committee meetings entirely, then you can get your questions answered.
I think, personally, I would like to see what we're supporting in the letter itself so that we know exactly what we're supporting. Because just to say that we continue to provide support to meet their goals of their project is, and we really kind of need something more specific. And again, right, exactly, we support saving the building, we support feasibility study. What I understood when they came to ask for our support was that they were looking to do a feasibility study on the building, on whether the building was even worth saving or not. So I was a little confused by the letter because it's a little more generic than that.
No, I was just going to say, in defense of Ms. Rivera, Rosa is actually leaving the Skenty Foundation. There's a, there's something going on at the, oh, it's over, ready?
No, it's happening right now.
That's what I'm saying.
Be done in just a minute.
Okay, because that's what I was saying, that's why they're over there. Because I'd missed that. So now, do you want to table this just for a little bit till they get here?
Yeah, I'm willing.
You okay to do that, folks?
I'm certainly willing to do that.
Yeah, we'll just have to, I mean, after executive session.
After executive session?
Well, because once we go in, once we do these first couple of things, we're in executive session for the rest of the agenda. That's why I'm.
I could talk slow. I could talk slow. Very slow.
We go to public stage first? Or is that going to be executive session?
Yeah, everything after, everything after we get to item number eight.
So let's go real slow. And let's have some engaging discussion here, and we'll be good until we see, I'm looking ahead.
So, all right, I will recess government operations, and we'll see how that plays out. So motion to recess, please?
I'll move it.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you.
All right, I'm going to talk real slow. So, call to order, the Committee on City Development and Planning. All right, they're on their way? Okay, very good. So we got that working. So a couple of items here. The first one is the final review of the Upper Union Street bid budget. And are we calling on our, our new folks from finance, or who's going to do this?
No, you're in.
Just, I mean.
This one that's spoken publicly.
So no, we don't need any other, yeah, because I'm fine with it.
We just need to move this?
Yes.
There's no, there needs to be discussion here because we have to.
I think Mr. Moon already moved.
Karen, do you have any questions at all?
No, I think the Upper Union Street, I do want to mention, they had their tree lighting yesterday, and it was very well attended, and I think they do a great job.
Mr. Reeves?
I concur with that. Of course. I got myself in a selfie with.
You did, I heard you talk about that, huh?
Your poor selfies.
I didn't get to see that one.
Actually, with my poor selfie, yes.
Oh, yes. We did a couple of, we were doing lots of little picture-taking at the Upper Union Street tree lighting yesterday.
Very nice.
The Santa Claus was very authentic.
He looked good, huh?
The most authentic one I've seen in a long time.
I would agree with that, Mr. Ricky.
All right, we did good. All right, so we need a motion to move this?
So move.
Second.
Second, Miss Porterfield, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then item number two is the downtown Schenectady district there, and we have their 2017 budget as well to approve. We had, all right, there was no, nobody spoke as well. We had several people. Again, I think they're doing an outstanding job downtown for what they do here for our community. And we're certainly supportive, I'm sure, as an entire council for what they do.
Sorry, just want to mention.
Yep, she wants to mention.
The executive director, Jim Salingo, was actually profiled in the business review this past week, so if anyone hasn't seen it, it's a great article. Really, he's done a great job, and he did a great job promoting downtown, so.
Oh, very good. That's good. Ms. Prado?
Just for the record, we did receive one email comment, but no one's going to tell us.
Nice, very good. Any further discussion?
I'll move it.
Move, Mr. Moon, first. Second, Ms. Porterfield, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And item number three, to rename a portion of Knott Street to Rush Street. I'm not familiar with this. What is this one that you're doing here?
Apparently, I saw that it was legit. I know, I was asked to let us say the question. I don't have background on this. You do have background on it. Okay, great.
So when we did the original naming of the streets within the complex, we didn't include that tiny little bit of Knott between Front Street and the roundabout to be Rush Street so that when you're going this way, it's Knott Street, and when you're going around the roundabout that way, it's all Rush Street.
Rush Street.
So it doesn't affect anyone, you know, no households or anything. It's just that tiny little piece between the roundabout and where I think it's Mohawk Harbor Drive starts or whatever that is. From, once you get to that end, then it's already Rush Street. So we just have to rename that tiny little piece.
Do we have to get 500 signatures?
No, this is an official renaming, not a ceremonial renaming. And it's already gone through public hearing and all that stuff. Yes, we just have to pass it.
And then include that little piece, that little section there of the street.
Was that more or less an oversight?
Yeah, it's just.
By us, yes.
Just wanted some clarification there.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we don't need any public hearing or anything on this? We just need simply a motion to move that.
So move.
Mr. Moon, Aaron. Second. Ms. Porterfield, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now, Ms. Ward, you are on this one. Abandoning the seminary place.
There is a portion of vacant land, it is seminary place, which runs along the railroad tracks. We need to abandon it in order for the Cincinnati Pride and Perseid, they need to be able to out this on it, on actual seminary place. We went to close last week, and we realized that the seminary place was still technically held by the city, and we couldn't tell how many, they couldn't move forward without the city, because of passing a resolution that they're willing to abandon it. So once that happens, then they can subsequently purchase it.
Mr. Potter?
Yes, Ms. Prado.
Again, this was part of our original packet of procedure. It's just this one piece didn't make it to note. So when we get all of the legislative needs around that project going forward, it's kind of slipped in.
So we didn't have a night.
There's no utilities, there's nothing, right?
No. It's just a paper street.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move it.[1671.12]
Mr. Kozier?
Yes, Ms. Brazel.
Again, this was part of our original packet of procedure. It's just, this one piece didn't make it to那儿. So when we get all of the legislative needs around that project going forward, it's kind of slipped in.
We have several pieces.
So we didn't have an idea.
There's no utilities, there's nothing yet, right?
It's just a paper street.
Right.
Okay, I'll move it.
Second.
We're slowing down. Are you walking fast, or what? All right, I will, Ms. Porterfield, motion, second by Mr. Moon to Baron, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, another one, Ms. Ward, the land reconfiguration with my side.
In order for us to, essentially, the sidewalk was, we needed to have the sidewalk redone by my side. And in order to do so, we had asked that my side pay for a survey, which they did do. And in order for us to redo the sidewalk and stream out that line, they're going to give us a portion of their land, and then we're going to give them a piece of ours. So basically, makes it a clear corner there. Again, there's, you know, we have the right of way there, but in order for them to replace the sidewalks and all that, we had talked about reconfiguring the lot line, essentially.
Any questions or concerns? No? Again, my side's been a great neighbor to us, no question about that. All right, so we have a motion to move, Mr. Moon to Baron, Ms. Porterfield, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and item number six, ceremonial naming of a portion of Albany Street to Martin Luther King Way. We will make it Way, not Street, yes. Elton Way. And should we have Ms. Jetha Morris come up and speak to this, or?
Sure.
And I was saying, and Mr. Aguilera, yes, just come, please.
Good evening.
Can you introduce yourself, just for the?
My name's Randy Wood, I'm the chair of the Martin Luther King Coalition for the Human Rights Commission of Schenectady County. Angela Morris is our executive director. The reason we're asking for this, first of all, this year is our, or next year, actually, will be our 30th anniversary. So we're trying to do something in a big manner, and we thought it would be appropriate to do something such as naming the portion of Hamilton Hill after Dr. King, because Dr. King, of course, had such a dramatic impact on society, and his words are still relevant today, as they were yesterday. And so we thought it would be appropriate to do that. We thought when we initially came forward with this, that since there was no formalized process, that we were just going to go through whatever recommendations or suggestions were made by folks here in the city council to do so. And then we understand now, there's a procedure in place, do this, we process. And we were thinking, well, you know, since we're operating on the notion that we could not have to go forward, going through the application process, and then going out and getting 500 signatures, that we would just submit a request, and that would be heard by the city council and be acted upon. We feel that, that it's important, I mean, Dr. King, first of all, as a Human Rights Commission, we are part of county government, and, and also, the Human Rights, the Martin Luther King Coalition being a part of the Human Rights Commission, we're still, you know, we're separate, but we are still part of county government. So therefore, we feel that as a county government entity, that, that we're not private, part of county government, that would be appropriate for us to have this done as, and not have to go through this process that is being proposed. So, that being said, that's where we sit with this. We hope that we can get this through, because we'd like to get it done by sometime in January, so that we can announce it during our upcoming Martin Luther King celebration.
And to add to that, originally, we did research about maybe six months or a year ago, with our other coalition members, Kareem Medina San, about the Sanders, as well as Brian Ray, and some other members from the community. And we did research, looking at not only the city of Schenectady, but other cities around the region, regarding permanent designations of Martin Luther King. And we found in our research that city of Schenectady doesn't have a permanent designation, void city of Schenectady. There's, we have the MLK school, which is an educational system, but a permanent designation, like a street or a highway, we don't have one. So we talked about that early on in the summer, and the coalition said, well, why don't we, during our 30th anniversary, do a ceremonial street renaming ceremony after Dr. King, because 30 years, we've been in this since 30 years. We've been working with the city, having the programs and services here in the city by doing the street permits and things like that. So the coalition decided to do this, and wanted to have a part of a week, that weekend ceremony for leading up to our celebration service that we had on Sunday, on every third Sunday, we do it, because this year, we have a national keynote speaker, Dr. Steve Perry, coming. And so we wanted to commemorate Dr. King and the dedication, definitely in the Hamilton Hill area, where from Georgiana Dix Plaza, going all the way up to Craig Street, has the local civil rights area, because we have Georgiana Dix, we have the Harriet Tubman Way, as well as we have the Joanna Partners that's coming up. So that's what the coalition, we discussed, and that's what we propose right now. We're in the initial stages, we were finalizing, we originally wanted Craig Street, but then we did more research together, and we said, well, let's look at some other areas. And we saw that from Albany Street, from Georgiana Dix all the way up, that we're the local civil rights. So the national, Dr. King is an international figure. So we decided to do this, but then the 30th anniversary celebration.
And I also want to add is this, if you look at that quarter of Albany Street, you have a number of social services agencies. You have Sickum, you have St. Joseph's Place, you have SCAP, all of which came about after the efforts of Dr. King. And we figured by connecting, you know, in addition to the, the other streets that have been ceremonies, they aren't permanently named after figures who are involved in the civil rights movement within this county, the city and the county, that connecting that, that area would be appropriate, because again, Sickum came about 50 years ago, which came about during the time of Dr. King, SCAP, okay, St. Joseph's Place, which is part of the, part of the church, Catholic Church, again, they're all representing social justice, social services types of issues. And we thought it would be appropriate to have the street named in that fashion, to signify this is an area that is, you know, close to Dr. King, and is in the principle and the goals. Does that sound clear?
So just a couple of things. So you're looking to do Albany Street from Schenectady Street to Craig Street, is that correct?
Right, based on the ordinance that we were given, but then, it was a two-block mile radius. Originally, we wanted to do from Georgiana Dix Plaza, that's some of that, you know, confectionery, but because we were told that there's an ordinance, and we're old to that ordinance, we can't be exempt. We looked at back and forth, and we said, well, there's Schenectady Street, and then all the way.
Craig Street.
Right. But we wanted to know, to define, in the resolution, in that ordinance, that was brought up by one of the members, what is a two-block radius in that area?
Yes. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Porterfield.
So, in, in speaking with Reverend Sanders, he also brought up the fact that he thought that two blocks was too short, given the, the person who we're naming it after. So, and giving this some thought, it, even though it's the same area, if we did, if we decided to do this on the north side of Albany Street, starting at Hewitt Street and going all, it goes all the way down to Veder without a break, and that, on that side of the street, it's one block. So it conceivably gets what you want done, it's just not on the south side of the street, so. And, and the other part of it, that is, because Mr. Kozier talked about where the sign would be. There's already a ceremonial sign on the south side of the street, the Harriet Tubman Way, but there is a pole on the north side of the street that the sign could be placed on, on both ends, both at the Hewitt Street intersection and at the Veder Street intersection. So, in terms of that, if we, you know, if it was done on that side of the street, it would essentially, technically, be one block.
Yeah, that's nice, take off.
That's interesting, huh? John, you have a question?
Yes. So basically, what you're looking here for, for exemption, not to go about getting the 500 signatures, whatever other requirements.
As a government entity.
You're looking as a government entity, just present this to us, and we'll act in it as a council.
Yes, because the MLK Coalition, it's under the umbrella of the Human Rights Commission, but it's separate. So a good analogy would be the three-way authority. The three-way authority is under New York State, but it's a separate entity, quasi-entity. And that's how the Coalition is. It's under the umbrella of the Human Rights Commission, but it operates separately.
It's a quasi.
It's a quasi. So the commission has no say on what the Coalition does, however, it does have commission members on the Coalition, such as Randy, and also Kareem, who was a former commissioner, but he's also co-chair of the Coalition, and it has community members on there, but it operates separately, just for clarity as well.
And you also are asking to waive the fees. Any costs associated with the signing?
Right, as a government entity, right, we're just asking for exemption for petitioning, as well as government entity costs. But yet, 30 years, we've worked with the city of doing our services here, and then when we did the marches for the first, what, 22 years, we would, the city would allocate us the permit, and they'd charge us up until the last five years of those parades. And then the last three years, we did away with the parades, because we did get a lot of feedback, it was too cold, people were getting, couldn't walk anymore, so we changed the parade, the march into the pre-rallies and things like that. So we did work with the city for many years, for 30 years. Reverend Frazier, the late Reverend Frazier, started this 30 years with not only the members of a lot of the Baptist churches, but she did work with a lot of the city leaders and some county leaders as well, doing the research with Reverend Carl Taylor and some other city and county officials 30 years ago. So that's what we're going to be commemorating on that day, on the service. We're going to be doing a lot of history over 30 years, but also, hopefully, we would like to do this dedication on that Friday before, and to dedicate Dr. Martin Luther King Way to a historic moment here in the city, to put us on the map of having permanent designation for Dr. King.
So you're looking to do this before Friday, the 13th?
We're looking to do it.
Friday before?
January 13th, 2017. We haven't finalized anything. We didn't say anything to a lot of the folks, because until we get this finalized and formalized, then we'll make a public announcement, then we'll get the neighborhood association involved, and the health associations, neighbors, community partners. But we just wanted to make sure that we had everything formalized, finalized, and once it's finalized, that we make publications, promotions, and everybody involved. This is not about us, the Coalition, it's about the community celebrating Dr. King's legacy, looking at 2016 and our political season. It's, you know, we, Dr. King's name is still alive, and we need to show now in the city, with the county, but the state, that the city of Schenectady represents Dr. King, the way of social justice, academic justice, in his name and dedication.
Yes, Ms. Brazel.
Anything else we can really do with that?
Do what?
Bypass the ordinance?
We talked about that last time.
We did talk about this.
Several councilmen, councilpeople, whatever, had a lot of concerns about that.
That's, I mean, that's the bottom line. We could want something all day long, but we have to make sure it's legal.
That we can do it.
So Rachel, do you have any ideas? Is that a question for Carl?
I'm not, to ask Carl. I don't want to say anything without talking to him about it first.
I mean, we initiated the plans before, I mean, even though we didn't formally initiate before the actual resolution was passed, I mean, so is that, you know, that, could we be covering it under that purpose, under that basis?
But also, too, we looked through the resolution that was given to us, we looked at the resolution, we looked at every line. And at the end of the resolution, you will see that Mr. Felatito signed the ordinance that we were giving out to last year, 2015, and the council just passed it November 17th. So if you look at the resolution, you see Mr. Felatito, because he just discovered this over the weekend, that he signed it November 17th, 2018. So.
That's gotta be a mistake. That's gotta be a mistake.
That would happen, we didn't even.
It's a mistake.
Blame that on the city clerk.
We're just going because it's on your, he signed it.
Well, I mean, it actually says it provides its form 17th day of December 2015.
So we looked at that, and their original policy, also, we looked at other.
You must argue traffic tickets like this before.
Yeah, you will definitely get us one of those for it, yes.
I just think it opens up a can of worms.
We also took that previous past ceremony, and on the April, there was gaming, there was a rush gaming, and then.
That's not ceremonial.
That's not ceremonial. That was actually.
That was not ceremonial.
And we had to do public hearings for that and everything, too. That was a long process.
We haven't, that's why we actually embarked on this entire process, is that we had other not international requests. And it, it got to be a subjective thing for the council, you know, who, how do we decide on what community members are worthy of ceremonial renaming, and what community members aren't. So we wanted to take it off the council's plate. Now, this is a different situation. However, we're not dealing with a resolution, we're dealing with an ordinance, which gives us a lot less flexibility. So I think at this point, it's really a question for corporation council. I don't think we can even deliberate whether this is possible. And it's got to be based on whether it's legal or not first, right?
I would think so. Really, the only thing that's holding this up, being, would be the fact that we would still require to get the 500 signatures, which is not a big deal. I mean, quite, we'll, there's way that, you know, that can get done quite easily, I think.
The churches are no again.
Right.
No, when I went to go get the formal application, as well as the petition on Friday, the folks' office, and I had no information for it.
We did not have the application completely, but the petition he did have, and I forwarded that to you. I forwarded that to you.
Email?
Yes, it was an email, yep. So that was on Friday. But we'll, yeah, because Carl did that for us, and he sent it, and I know it for, but I'll, I can't get that, I emailed him, unfortunately. He did? Well, that's tech for you. What are you gonna do? But anyway, from what I read. Yeah, so we have that, so.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, in court, counsel, that we would accept the letter as an application.
Okay.
Right, right. And there's a, there's a type on there, you realize that, right? I told you about that earlier? Oh, we have a new one here someplace? Because I don't have a new one here. It just says, "Remaning of Craig, renaming of Craig Street."
I made the, I made the correction.
To, and who has that letter, is what my question is.
Our letter still says Craig Street.
We do not have that, as far as I'm concerned, so.
I believe when I was walking in, I gave to John.
Well. There's, I'm gonna go to the, there's six, there's seven of us, plus the clerk, so do you have, eight of those, any chance, or no?
Yeah, I can do that.
No, you have, oh, you only have one copy, that's what you're saying.
I just made one, but I can email it, I can make copies, we're gonna need a revision. I made the revision.
We'll make the copies here. Yeah, we'll make the copies here. All right, so we can do that. And then the other piece is, is the timeline here, obviously, January 13th, because somehow we'd have to talk with John Caluccio to create, you didn't take a picture of the Harriet Tubman sign, did you, any chance?
Not, I was planning on doing it tomorrow.
All right, because that's what I was looking for.
It's a template, he uses any, but I think it's a consistent.
Well, no, this was different. This actually had her picture on it, and it was, it was above the, the way, you know, the Harriet Tubman Way.
This one's, I think he uses a similar template for all of them, that's what he said before.
All right, so we want to make sure that that can be done in time for the event, obviously.
Now, and, and the, the timeline's too tight. We can still do it for next year, still be the window for your initiative 2017 with Dr. King.
Yeah, because we can, we can announce that it's coming forward, you know, it'll be occurring at, at the, at the celebration.
Right.
No, that's as a point of information.
If you come up, just so people on the camera can see and hear.
Hopefully, they'll see on TV.
I'm Kareem Medina San, I'm also a member of the Coalition, co-chair. But, but I know in Albany, my buddy, Mike O'Brien, is one of the city council. And as a result of that, they did a resolution, the council did a resolution. And then after that, it was voted on, you know, so that, because it is an issue of codes. So the resolution, and then people voted on it at a meeting, and then it was decided if it went or if it didn't go. And that's, that's how they did it. Yeah, I guess our only concern when we looked at, we've been working on this for almost a year now. And the other part of this is that we looked at everything, you know, like cities all over the place. We noticed that you've also looked at Hoboken, you've also looked at, it's one of my places upstate, Norwich, as places that have ceremonial resolutions. The other part of this is that because we didn't have a procedure in place when we acquired, we were hoping that we could get around, you know, in arbitration, is there a rule? And if there isn't a rule, then maybe we could go by some type of a resolution because of this. I mean, you've all been very supportive of us.
Oh, yeah.
As far as Dr. King's programs and just human rights in particular. So this can help us. I, I've asked to try to get back on the commission. Granted, they're looking at it from an ethical standpoint, since I'm a policymaker, but still, I think what we've tried to do is to make this thing really happen, and, and we think. what we've tried to do is to make this thing really happen, and, and we think it could be really good for Schenectady moving forward, because one other thing is that the Craig Street area is one of the largest, um, it's a central location to downtown Schenectady, and as the casino has opens up, it's going to be more populated by people of all diverse backgrounds, um, and we were hoping that that could, could be inclusive. So thank you.
Ms. Pordefield?
Okay, so now, I, I would just want to be clear. Are we talking about Albany Street? Or Craig Street? So we're definitely talking about Albany.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, uh, the other thing is, um, I, I think that 500 signatures is really not, it's something you could easily do. I mean, you're a coalition, there's a number of people, you have a lot of supporters, and then you were talking about, um, you know, making sure that the public knew about it. That, you would cook, you would cover both of those at one time by, you could inform people by having flyers, or just that door to door while you're doing your signatures. And, um, I, from my, from what I'm hearing, people, you know, the council's in support of, but just really have concerns about, do we try to circumvent the system here and then have folks look at it and think that that wasn't the most ethical thing for us to do?
Or even legal.
Or even legal.
I mean, I, I agree with that, but I mean, again, coming from state government, I mean, as one state, state, you know, agency to another.
Right.
Okay, and, and, you know, state agencies tend, you know, we have MOUs, memorandum of agreements, where we reach out and make arrangements for those state agencies to provide maybe shared services, but we recognize that we're both state entity, you know, we're both governmental and governmental, and that's what I'm saying. We're not a community organization, we are part of, of county government. So therefore, it's like reaching, one county entity reaching out, I mean, one governmental entity reaching out to another governmental entity and saying, you know, can you approve this? Um, and I can understand from the standpoint of being a private citizen or a part of an organization, but we're not private. I mean, we're funded. Our funding comes through county government. So therefore, you know, even though we're quasi, I mean, quasi independent, but we still get our, you know, they approve the, the county government when it does its budget every year, approves funding for the month, uh, for the Human Rights Commission and Martin Luther King, so that's the way I'm looking at it.
I, I just, just to follow up, I just really think, though, it's really important that, and this has always been my, uh, my take on things that happen in the community, that communities need to be involved. And at this point, you said that that hasn't happened, that it's basically something that's coming out of the, the coalition. And I think it's just really a good opportunity to do that, to get the signatures, to get folks on board. I just think it's a really good opportunity, and again, um, 500 signatures really, you know, I, I think it's quite, quite doable.
We recognize.
And, and it's something, and we also recognize too, that it's community involved. Again, when I mentioned, um, we didn't want to disclose or publicize this, uh, this ceremony, this dedication ceremony, until everything was finalized and everything was set in stone, and then we were going to do a big publicity piece and get everybody involved, invitations, get everybody involved, letters of support and all of that, but also flyers. So we didn't start publicizing to the local community until this process was formalized and finalized. We didn't know that we had to go through an ordinance of 500 signatures. We, we were in assumption that there was no policy in place. So, um, until we, we were aware there was an ordinance involved, that's when, um, we had, we were informed about 500 signatures.
So it is, it, let me, so to clarify, and Rachel, I don't know if you're, you're up to speed on this whole thing, but I think just to clarify, Ms. Brazel, um, we can move this tonight. We can accept the application tonight, we can move on this tonight, we can approve it next Monday formally, you just have to get the 500 signatures, and this is a, this is done.
And we have 180 days.
Yeah, yeah, you know, this is done. We're not gonna, we're not gonna sit here and say, look at you, and we're not gonna look at everyone else's signatures. Like, look at this, we are supporting you 110%. And I think to some of our points here, that is why we did the ordinance. Again, and, and all due respect to, to Dr. King, and of course, the Coalition, we understand, we're working together, but that's why we did this ordinance was, again, we didn't know this was really happening, I mean, this soon, but, you know, I guess, Ms. Brazel, we have so many folks that are coming to us asking to name, you know, ceremonial ways and blocks and, and different areas of the city, that, that was the need to have this in place. Uh, and again, we would accept the letter as a formal application, because again, we don't have the application in place at this time, uh, and, and Mr. Thorin said that they would accept this, and I think Ms. Brazel said as well, this letter. Uh, and again, we'll move this tonight in committee, get things moving for you. The official vote will be next Monday, uh, and again, I'll forward that to Ange, I'll give you that, before we leave here, we'll make sure we shoot it out to you.
Yes.
Yeah, because I think I got it Thursday or Friday. Um, we'll get it right out to you. Let's work together as a community, as, as Ms. Pordefield said, you know, we have to involve the neighborhoods too, and I know you're gonna do that.
And that was our, that was our plan, to involve everybody, and we just didn't know we had to go through this long process.
No, it's not a long process. My goodness. Talk about budget meetings, my friend, you're talking about.
Our misunderstanding is that we are a governmental entity, we thought that, you know, as a governmental entity.
We weigh that, yeah.
I mean, you know, that we wouldn't have to go through a little regular community-based process because of our community-based agency or.
Yeah, well, Ms. Brazel, then.
And you don't know the answer to that. You know, we can't sit here.
No, I know.
You really have to have Corporation Council tell us, but I think to make this move, first of all, just to make sure that, well, she's not, yeah, no, that's Rachel, so, um, so I think we prove it time-wise. If we vote this out of committee tonight to be voted on Monday, and in the meantime, we talk to Corporation Council, and if he can shine a different light on us, on it for us, because it's a governmental entity, he will get that information to us. But at least we've made another step in the forward direction to get done what needs to get done.
Sure.
Without saying, well, let's hold this for two weeks and then talk to Corporation Council.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're not gonna do that.
Where it's like a fail-safe measure at this point.
Yeah, I guess we want to keep things going. Janet, did you still have a question?
There was something I want to touch on, so reach out to, uh, Mr. Felotico to see if there's any exemption can be granted. If not, we'll just proceed, so.
Well, we didn't include any exemption in the ordinance, so that's the point that Ms. Brazel made.
And that's the reason why we can't pass it by resolution, is we have an ordinance.
We have an ordinance which supersedes.
Where I would assume that Albany doesn't, so they could just do a resolution.
So let's reach out to Mr. Felotico and see if anything can be done. If not, we'll just stick to.
Right. And you guys are okay with all that, right? You guys are good, and Ange, and folks, you're good, right? I mean, we'll get it moved and we'll get things moving. Get your signature, and again, we just need that new, the corrected letter, though, okay? Because your letter says Craig Street here. Um, so we do want to make sure that that is, is corrected.
And I don't think there's anything that states that they can't start collecting signatures immediately.
No.
You don't have to wait till we move it on Monday.
No. Be a church on Sunday.
Exactly.
So does that mean we have to petition?
Right. Reverend, you know what I'm talking about, my friend, you get them right there. You get 500 on Sunday.
Yeah, just, uh, just get to all the churches then, and, um.
Yes.
Start, um, signature drive.
Beware of the percentages, though.
Yep, the addresses.
Yes.
We'll be fine.
So 500 signatures citywide or that neighborhood?
No, 500, uh.
Or that neighborhood, because that whole strip, I don't think.
500, no, it's, it's the entire neighborhood, so it's the entire voting district of Hampton Vale, um, and it's 75% of that has to be in the neighborhood, and 25% out. It's not just those two blocks, it's the whole neighborhood.
We'll give you the map.
The way we look at that is you go to our 2020 report, the comprehensive report, the 2020, and there's the five neighborhoods, so all the designations are there with the maps, uh, and that is again how we designated the five neighborhoods for the city of Schenectady. All right, and it's a big, it encompasses even part of Mount Pleasant, if I recall. I think it goes over the, because up to Crane Street, I think, um, considering that big old area, yeah, so it's big. All right, but listen, thank you very much. We're certainly ready. Make sure you include us, whatever we need to do, and, and we'll try to meet with, uh, John Cluccio, I'll get that photo.
Sure.
Um, maybe you're not gonna work on that, is that all right? I connect them with John, so we can get things moving.
I'm right here, I'm right there, I can take a picture.
And I'll, I volunteer to help collect signatures.
Yes, there you go.
Help them to live there.
With, with mom too, right? My goodness.
I, I, for the record, I would hold all council members accountable regarding helping us, uh.
We are used to carrying petitions, so don't you worry about that.
For the record.
Petitions are not a problem.
I will be going around, making calls to everybody.
We've done petitions.
Help caring. Thank you so much for your time, appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there some more question on both this?
All right, are there any other questions on this? I think it's, I think it's a great idea, and, uh, like I said, it is overdue in the city, there's no question about that. I think it's gonna be a great, great ceremony, so, um, all right, so a move by Mr. Motivaren, is that correct?
Second.
Second by Ms. Pordefield, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and the roundabouts. Ms. Rachel?
So, um, there is excess land around the roundabout, uh, because basically they, we had stated with the Department of Transportation that they, we would have to hold more than we actually needed in order to.
Can we talk this?
Give that property back to the developer. We had to have a resolution passed essentially saying that we would sell that back before the developer can be good, and before DOT would sign off on it.
Question, are we giving it back or selling it back?
I was gonna say.
Well, it's my understanding, yeah, it's my understanding that we took it from him to begin with, so I don't believe we'll be selling it back. Um, we basically took it in order to make the roundabout, so it's just an excess strip, so no, we won't be selling it back. But they're saying essentially if the land has not increased in value, the DOT is saying that there was no extra value added to it now that, you know, from when he gave it to us versus when we're giving it back to them.
Ms.
It's actually quite an involved process, and DOT comes in and it's a big thing, and they, you know, assess how much land will be needed, and they just take the land, and then it's not all.
I know the process, but she said giving and selling, that's why.
But yes, it is.
Yes, you're right.
It is the developer's land to begin with, um, so it will be returned to the developer.
Fine job. Any other questions on that?
So, there's no money involved here.
No money, no exchange of money.
We're not getting any money?
Nothing. You got enough money, coming in.
Really?
Move by, uh, Ms. Pordefield, second by Mr. Motivaren, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All righty.
Those statements that's been made at this table.
No, I didn't.
I did, asked for motion.
But I didn't.
Well, I keep calling on him to make the motion, so I figure I will go for you this time.
You don't want me to, um.
Yeah, he's, he's made the motion every single one.
Just keep.
Gonna do it equal here, that's what I do.
Next.
Stay out of my committee, buddy. All right, Ms. Pordefield makes the motion, second by Mr. Motivaren.
Yes, sir, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And, uh, the other items are gonna go into executive session, correct? So I will recess this committee, am I correct on that?
Uh, I will go right into.
Or we'll just make the motion to go into executive session for the purpose. Are they here now?
That's executive session.
Nobody else there?
They're coming now.
They're coming now?
It's Craig Street.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so I guess we didn't make the motion, so, um, so I guess let's, let's do a motion to recess this committee at this point, then, correct? All right, by Ms. Pordefield, second by Mr. Motivaren, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
So our committee is now recessed, and then you're gonna call back and order somebody.
We're gonna call back to order government operations, and we're discussing the letter of support for Miracle on Craig Street.
You folks just made, you had like 30 seconds, we're going into executive session. Come, come forward here.
We need to all, please.
Well, whoever wants to speak to the, uh, the letter of support.
This way, I'm.
Just so the, uh, viewing audience can see you also, and there you go.
Yes.
So everyone reviewed your letter, but we do have some questions, so, questions. Who wants to introduce yourself, so that folks at home know who you are?
Yes, my name is Raul Zavala. I am, um, the president of Miracle on Craig Street.
Some questions?
Of course, can I ask, just, just, all right, give us a summary of what's, um, the program, where it is today, Miracle on Craig Street.
Okay.
Chart summary.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, so right now, where we're at, um, we're still planning, uh, we're, we're working with a lot of different people on a lot of different ends, with programming, with budgeting, with community loan fund, um, doing a lot of training for our board, um, and then also trying to get the support from the city, and also, um, foundation support to help us with obtaining, um, excuse me, design plans for, um, a new center. So that's where.
So you mentioned design plan, design plan for the existing Carver Center?
So the plan is to do the feasibility study to see if the, uh, a new design, a new center, new construction is more beneficial than rehabbing the old property. Um, a lot of what we have to call off now is from other people who have walked through the building, but not really had done a full, long study of, you know, how much it's gonna cost to rehab, and also aesthetically fix the building. Um, we're inclined to think that new construction will be, um, more beneficial in the long term, to have a more energy-efficient building, so we still have to go through that study, and in order to do that, we need, um, access to the property, so we can't just do it without that. So, um, we are, we're thinking, and a lot from, obviously, um, consultants, um, they have been telling us that it might be the, um, the best idea is to do new construction.
So do you, do you have a same frame of, of the, the side?
No, because the building is still going through foreclosure, so when we have access
to, um, you know, city has access to it, then we can, can side control, like, then, you know, we can get moving a lot faster on that.
Round my corner.
Oh, see, I wanna take over your committee, but I don't mind. So, Ms. Ward, um, where are we in the process with Carver, you know, that timeline at this point?
We took it, uh, we, we filed to take it, but it won't be available until after February 28th. That's if there's no answer filed, um, just basically starting to see when that comes, so we're really looking at, um, my first is March, to move forward on that.
Ms. Pordefield, earlier.
I have a question. Have you looked into, uh, maybe making a better use of your funds of working with the new Boys and Girls Club that's gonna be built there, or with some of the existing structures that are there and using those, um, that might be, uh, more cost-effective?
Um, we have been talking with Shane about the new Boys and Girls Club Center, um, and I think that, like, a lot of us who are on the board, and even some of our volunteers that work with the Boys and Girls Club, Shane, and, um, work, you know, in the Boys and Girls Club, bouncing for them, and then also they help a lot, help us a lot in our community , which, you know, we're in the community. I think, um, that our visions are different for the Carver Center and the Boys and Girls Club. Um, we are really approaching, you know, the vision of Carver as really community, um, grown, community-involved, community-led, community-operated and organized. Um, so a lot we want, we're really approaching it from like a place-based, asset-based, um, development, something that's very organic in the Boys and Girls Club. It's just a, it's a Boys and Girls Club, it's just different than what, what we have in mind.
What about some of the existing structures that are available, maybe making an agreement with the school district to use Washington Irving, um, something along those lines? Have you checked into that?
Um, so I haven't checked into it specifically. Uh, we do have people on the board who work at Washington Irving. Um, we have talked to Washington Irving to have our library there, have our multicultural library there. At this time, they're actually expanding what they do with working with kids and also doing ESL and the task programs, so they have limited space there. They actually had a few empty rooms at the end of last school year, but going into this school year, they, they really don't have additional space. They have some space in the basement, they have a gym, it's not, it's not as good a space, and because it's in the school district, um, you know, things I need to, oh, I shouldn't say that.
Good job on that one.
I guess, I guess the, the concern I have, I commend everybody for all their hard work and wanting to do this, but the, the numbers just don't seem to work, and I, I think that's a real concern, at least of myself, um, I don't know, perhaps others, but, uh, the numbers just don't seem to be there, and, um, I don't want to see you get so far down the road and then. the road and then, poof, and, and I think that's a legitimate concern. That's why I'm asking if you've looked to partner with other agencies or look to use other buildings, because I think that would get you a lot further to your, your goal, which I think is a good goal, but financially, just doesn't seem to, to be there.
So, I think one of the main questions that came up when we first started to discuss this and then we tabled it until we got here, was exactly what support you want, like, um, your support letter is very generic, and just saying, you know, the council supports it, but I think what I would like to see is us do, or discuss several different letters of support as you go through your process. So, right now, if you're looking for our support, saying that we think it would be a good idea for you to go out and do a feasibility study on the building, and all that, I would like you to fashion your support letter with that, and then bring it back to the council, so we know exactly what we're supporting. And then it might be that you want us to support your request for the Act, or a grant, or whatever, because I don't, I, I, I think that small number of people can do amazing things, and you guys have worked really hard and done amazing things, so personally, and I can only speak for myself, I want to show Miracle on Craig Street support, but I want to show it for something specific, um, as you go forward, and I think it'll be more powerful for you, too, um, to get several letters of support from us, rather than just one general that's dated, you know, maybe three months ago, maybe six months ago, maybe two, you know, a year ago, as you go down the road, but have it dated in a more timely manner, that'll be more useful.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, that makes sense.
So maybe just get a little more focused, and...
No, no, I agree, I think that we've kind of had that conversation before, and we can be very specific when you find the funders, and, and certainly, let me tell you, I, I definitely understand and embrace the idea of wanting to have a fresh new community center in the community, and I think there's some conversations about some other, other, because we have plenty of land in the area, so, you know, even looking at someplace that could even be larger than, than the current footprint, but I, you know, amongst Craig Street is, you know, I know it's, it would be, have to be Miracle on a different street, but...
There is, there is no... Have a ceremonial name change.
What's that?
Have a ceremonial name change.
Oh, yeah. But, um, but looking at that, so, I understand why in a new build and all that, but again, it would be really, it would be much more powerful, even, I could speak as a grant reviewer, to see a letter that specifically speaks to that particular grant, you know, dated in a certain timeframe, and, um, I believe what Ms. President was saying is that as we go down the road, if you need another letter, and another one, and another one, but, you know, very specifically, we know who we're writing to, and specifically, the grant you're applying for would be a lot more powerful for your, for your applications.
And I think the key is, too, the February 28th date that Rachel was saying, Ms. Ward was just indicating, uh, really, our hands are, everybody's hands are really tied until that date, until we get clarification of the building rights. So, again, you, the group is, again, very, very active, but I would really consider just, hold, let's hold off and stand by, if you would, and hopefully it's not like the bridge that we're going on, and hopefully for many, many years, right? But that would be my recommendation, and, and again, I don't know if I'm correct with, with that, Ms. Ward, but I think just waiting to see what happens with that, because that really would change the entire picture, you know, once we find out who has ownership, am I right on that, uh, then we can proceed with some definite plans and some strategy moving forward, rather than just being very generic at this point, uh, and I know it's tough to wait, but I think, I think it might be worth doing.
Just so that they don't come to us, and we can support something specifically for February 28th.
Right, yes.
But if you're looking specifically for the feasibility, you know, that's like really your next step, um, let's take control of the building so you guys can get in there, and then show your support.
Make it easier.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we want to wait until February for the letter for the feasibility study, because I mean, actually, who would get that letter, I guess I'm not, um, that particular letter?
Why does he need a letter for feasibility study?
I don't know, I'm asking, I'm asking, I don't know. If, you, you suggested a letter for the feasibility, so how would that exactly?
Well, they can't get in there. First of all, you can't get in the building.
I, I understand that, I'm asking the question, how would a letter help you with the feasibility study is my question?
Well, so my, so my idea of the first step of the letter was kind of, the conversations that we've been having with funders, what they want to know is, um, how do we know you're gonna get the property? That's what they want to know. So even, like, now we have, you know, a grant application in, um, but they don't want to give us, you know, how many thousand dollars until they know that we actually are gonna get the, the property. So, it was kind of, the conversation was around, you know, if you could get a letter of support from the city, then we know that, um, we know that they, they will, you know, generally support you. The other conversation, the other conversations are around, how do we know somebody else can't just come in and buy the property once the city has it, because there's nothing stopping that. So that was the request for the letter of support from City Council, also from the mayor to know that you guys are supporting us in obtaining this property and not someone else. And I don't know if we can do that, but that's the...
They can do that either.
I don't know, I don't know. I mean, if, if you have a specific funder in mind, can we give a letter of support to you for that funder? Because that's, because that's what I'm understanding you to say, is that, that you're asking for funds, so is there a specific funder you could give us your name, say that we, you know, we support that?
Yeah.
Because your letter is, you know, the letter is, doesn't read that way, it's just, you know, to whom it may concern.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I was, Josh, and if you have any specific to the feasibility study, maybe we can do a letter of resolution to support your feasibility study, it's all the funding.
Okay.
I don't think we can do that, that we have.
Can't do that.
No, we don't own the building, Janet, I mean, that's the whole key to this whole thing right now.
Yeah, my one, one, so, that should be like, because you're actually looking for a specific reason, right? But I still, I, if we don't own the building, and we don't know the future of the building, and we don't know what's gonna happen with the building, I don't know that we can throw it out in front and say, well, when we do get the building, we'll, you know, I mean, I don't know, I mean, because tons of things happen, right?
Whatever they're saying.
If they're filled with asbestos, the city might want, not want to take it over. Like, we have, we have buildings that are already in foreclosure process, but they're brownfield, because people have mixed stuff and soil, and the city takes them over, and they can't keep them.
Right.
So it's like a weird thing, right?
Yeah, so, so the, just a clarification here, you're absolutely correct, there could be major issues with the building, and it may be an expense that no one wants to take on, so, um, I think what we need to do is, is kind of get control of the building, which I believe will be in February sometime, and have, um, you know, have, have the city do an evaluation, an initial evaluation on it, once the city has control of it with the engineers, and find out, I'm quite confident that there's going to be some sort of environmental issues, because the building is built, you know, 100 years ago, or where it was.
1970s.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, like, not 100 years ago.
Was 70?
It was either 60s or 70s. I'm pretty sure there's asbestos, and it's a point, and to be, asbestos in the hand can be very expensive, so, um, you know, my, my, I, I understand your passion around what you want to get done, I understand everything you're trying to do, but you also have to be aware of what other, um, costs may be affiliated that you are not aware of as of yet, so, um, I, I wouldn't want to promise you a building, and then all of a sudden, it's not gonna, the building isn't gonna be conducive for what you want it to do, so, I would be, I would wait for us, before we would do any kind of, I mean, we're supportive of your organization, for sure, but supportive of doing anything with this building, we really, I, I feel we can't do anything until we actually have control of it, which would be, according to Ms. Ward, it's gonna be sometime in February. Okay.
Other questions or comments? If you'd like to add?
If I can just make one comment to her, and Rosa, sorry I missed your event this, this evening, but I don't know if many of you have heard, but Rosa is moving on, uh, she was with the Skeneke Foundation for many, many, for how many years you put in there?
Three.
Three, uh, and just an outstanding young lady, and, and some great leadership, and then, and wherever you're gonna be going, we really certainly wish you the best, but again, thank you for what you've done in our community, I know we're gonna see a lot of you, uh, and we wish you well, all right? You're welcome.
What's the future hold?
Oh, sure.
You don't have to.
No, she's not telling us.
I was giving you, I thought that was opportunity, but okay.
The future holds as the community center.
Okay.
All right, right?
And, you know, in the next two months, if you decide you have your site set on another area, or whatever, and you're not even going to, you know, do a feasibility, I mean, come back, tell us how we can support you.
Okay.
I want you to hear that louder than anything, tell us how we can support you. We have to make sure that we're doing it in a way that is, you know, makes sense for the city, but just because this particular scenario didn't work doesn't mean we don't want to support you.
Excuse me, do I have to stand over there to add something?
Uh, just so that our, um, people at home didn't see.
Sorry, I mean, uh... Because I'm glad you said that, I'm glad you said that, which is, sorry, I just wanted to add something, um, because I'm listening to everything that you guys are saying, and, um, oh, by the way, I'm Rachel Fraser, I'm a board member, a core member of Miracle on Craig Street, um, two-time community police faculty, well, champion, hope you...
Every time we hear that, every time.
No, I just wanted to, um, just add, like, um, so, we are aware that there may be issues with the building, but, um, our goal is to have a center in Skeneke, so I was so relieved to hear you say that we have your support, you know, even if we had to go to a different location, so be it, if we do, um, the goal is to have a center in Hamilton Hill, so, um, I just wanted to say that, even though the mon, the numbers may not seem like they're there, you know, until Michael Jordan, he wasn't gonna be in the NBA.
I'm specifically talking this building.
But, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, we're going, you know what I mean, that's our goal, so, your support is everything to us, so, I just wanted to say that.
Good, yes, yes, yes.
I just saw it, so let's, uh, the comments, you should, are you all keep your options open, in terms of looking at other buildings, not saying you're not, you know, trying to get a car or a center, but maybe there are opportunities to tap into what you want, so, if a building that you can start, or, et cetera, etc., might come out to be, you know, something that, too, all of us might now want to attach.
Or if a new build, just looking at land that's, you know, a mouth.
Yeah, those are the options, yeah, we can land, new building, present building, letting it available, and, all right, um, please let us know.
Thank you, Rosa.
Thank you.
All right.
Motion to re-adjourn.
To re-adjourn.
Okay. Motion to adjourn government operations by Mr. Palamani, second.
Yeah, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
All right, so I'll call back to order the committee on city development and planning, and can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the three items, so, for sale, Mr. Motivaren, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor, say aye. We are now going into executive session.